City of Oconomwa Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, May 2, 2023. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
If you could call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Happy birthday. Alderman Spiegelberg. Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Maroney.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Have you been here? Great. We are going to discuss the 2024 budget priorities. So a little different approach. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our first time doing this. This was a suggestion that came through the Alderman when, Alderman Mulder and Rosick, when we had met with them and had some discussion, thought it'd be a good idea for department heads to kind of present some of their top thoughts of what they're going to be doing for their department budgets, so that the Alderman are aware. We realize that that'll take up the majority, if not all, of the time, so we'll plan on having the Alderman then provide comments and their thoughts at the next meeting. We'll set up another one of these meetings. The thought process here was to kind of make sure that we're moving in a direction or that we don't come to the council in September with a completed budget and they say, well, what about this? And then we got to go back and try and do some things. So that's the purpose. So the purpose tonight, though, is really is just to let the department heads kind of go through their items. You got their memos in advance. If there's a couple high-level questions, that'll be fine. We're not looking to drill down and get into any specifics. And the one thing to keep in mind that, you know, everything that's on on those memos and what'll get discussed in two weeks from the Alderman, we'll have to go into the budget and we'll see what we have money for and room for and kind of prioritize from there. So the next meeting would be for the Alderman to speak. And then the one after that, we want to kind of put all the ideas together, but also start looking at strategic plans. Now, we might want to do major street work in a certain order, so maybe that's something in our strategic plan that says, you know, 2024 is going to be Concord Road. 2026, you know, every two years, we're going to do Silver Lake Street. Something of that effect. Police officers, additional personnel, that's where that'll come in. And we can get that into our strategic plan and be able to work from there on that. So a couple of different things that we're going to be able to do that'll work everything into the budget process. But, you know, our biggest challenge is is we don't know what we have for dollars until we get all the information. So with that, we will kick it off. We're going to go in the order that everything is in in the memo, so it was alphabetical by department. So we're going to go with us city clerk first.
Thank you, Mayor.
And each department head has 10 minutes, and I'm going to have a timer.
Are you going to do the timer?
Okay, Dan, in your mark, get set, go.
Here's a microphone. All right. Well, I will. One second. I'm loading up my PowerPoint. This one's mine. Okay, thank you all very much. So I'm going to work on the city clerk's budget, obviously. And my top priorities are mainly the more expensive items in my budget. And so on the first slide, I am going to talk about the city's population and the growth. So over the last 10 years, the city has seen steady growth in residential, right? So as you can see on the chart, if you, you know, I started at 2012 to give me my base number and then have gone down through 2022. And these are the state estimated population. So this is a number they gave us that they say is our official number. Truthfully, it's higher, but we have to go with the state. So we have grown by approximately, I'm rounding here, 2,700 people since 2013. And adding to that number that we see here are several development projects in the process and on the horizon. And those total 2,017 units. That's either already approved or they're on the horizon, might be coming through the door. And there are at least two known projects that we don't have unit details on. So based on the number of known units, it is anticipated in the next 10 years that the city's population could grow by an estimated 4,000 people. So the growth affects services, and for the clerks, it has a huge impact on election, agenda, documents, licensing, board of review workloads, along with our daily customer service load. So go to the next slide. So my first priority is to change the current part-time position that I have in my department to a full-time position starting January 1 of 2024. So due to the steady growth that I'm, you know, been, just showed you on the other slide, the department has needed to find efficiencies to do more with less. And we've been obviously doing that for many years to keep our operations running. But we do struggle to meet the level of service that we currently always provide, keep current, and to take on projects with our current staffing. So our election workload continues to grow, laws continue to change, and office staffing of elections now relies heavily on volunteers and poll workers. So in 2024, we're going to have four elections, including the presidential preference and president. And we are now offering extended voting hours. And many of our volunteers and poll workers only want to work part-time shifts. So it takes more man-hours to schedule those shifts and to reschedule when the volunteers and poll workers need to make changes. So we are really putting most of our time during elections into elections. Election workload ranges over three months. It's pre-election, day of election, and post-election. And it is a lot of workload over those three months. So on a four-election year, the amount of work causes extra overtime to for the staff to complete all of our other duties. So one of our larger unfinished projects, which we started in 2019, is to re-scan in 10 years of permanent documents that could not be exported into our new document management system. So we've been working on chipping away at getting those all scanned into our new program. So the department has three full-time staff, and I am looking, like I said, to change the part-time to full-time. So if you look at the top half of the screen, the full-time position with the help of Tony Poznick, we have costed that out to be approximately $86,000 for a full-time entry-level person. Our current part-time position is, I'm giving you the estimated, about $26,500 is the cost for that person. So the net effect of adding that position to or making it full-time is $59,500. So that's my first priority. My second priority are election machines. So there's several components to this slide, so I hope I make it understandable. But I think we'd have to dig a little deeper into this as the budget process goes on. So over the last few years, we have rented four DS-200 machines in order to process absentee ballots at the polls on election day. And in 2024, it will be no different. And the city, I'm looking at two options. We can rent those four machines at a cost of $13,915, or we can purchase them, cost of $20,600. So there's about a $7,000 difference here. And is it more cost-effective to rent or purchase? As I go on, it gets a little more twisted. Yes?
What's the life expectancy of one of the machines?
About 10 years. That's what I've been told. So looking ahead to 2024 and beyond, I do see that the absentee ballots will not go back to pre-COVID numbers. That was approximately 800. We processed about 800 per election. We are between the 1,500 and 4,000 range for every election, and I do not see that coming back down.
What does DS stand for?
DS? That's just the name of the machine. There is no, it's not an acronym.
Oh, okay.
With that 13, 9, that is every year? And you have to multiply that by four, or is that the actual bottom-line net number?
That is, well, it will cost the city to rent four machines for just 2024.
So then you'll have to do a 24, 25, 26?
If if we rent those four machines each time. And it doesn't matter if it's one election or four. It's a per-year cost.
The per-year. And then so if we purchase it, however...
To purchase them outright, it's $20,600. So we would have them from now until, you know, eternity.
For 13 years or whatever.
Right, right. For that $20,600.
Thank you.
But the county might change out machines in 2025.
Right. Well, that's where I'm getting further into my presentation here. So
Have to move along.
Like I mentioned, that the cost difference is about 7,000. Waukesha County has told me, I've reached out to them. Originally, when I did my 20, when I worked on my capital budget in 2022, I was looking at replacing the machines in 2027. Now the county has said that they are maybe looking as soon as 2025 to replace the DS-200 machines. But they don't know that for sure yet because they're just starting their conversations. Also don't know what machines it would be, so I don't know what cost that will be because each manufacturer has a different cost. So my numbers are based on the manufacturer we currently have now. So without knowing, I am looking ahead for efficiencies. So in addition, we have over 3,000 registered voters at each district. So there's a system called Badger Books. It's an electronic sign-in system that takes less time to process a voter than our paper system we're currently using. However, the cost to buy Badger Books, we would need, according to the manufacturer's recommendation, five machines at each district. That would be $40,322. So I have, when I'm that exact, I have quotes for this. So that's just for processing the voter. That does not take the place of the voting machine where you insert the ballots in. That's basically the poll book station. But it would take, it would speed up the people in line, is what that does. So in 20, like I said, I budgeted $50,000 in 2022 for a potential eight-machine purchase in 2027. So wrapping it up, what happens is that we need to decide if we're going to do option one or two, rent the machine or purchase, because I cannot get through 2024 without those extra machines. I can't. It would be disastrous, honestly. But then past that, in the capital budget, when we would look to purchase, would we look for the Badger Books, the electronic sign-in, or would we just look for purchasing new machines when the county wants to do that? Be a countywide purchase, more than likely. But I do not know, and the county can't say if they will help to offset the cost of that. So a lot of unknowns here.
Badger Books is an electronic sign-in system?
Yes.
I'm completely against any digital electronic sign-in system ever, forever and ever, as long as I'm on council, just FYI.
No, that's, that's okay.
People need to sign with a pen and be there in person, signing that book.
It's just an, it's an option. It's something that's out there, but it's not cheap.
It's going to be one of those things you always have to spend money on forever and ever. Because the software gets, needs to get upgraded. You get a book. It doesn't have to be upgraded. And people have to sign it. They have to use ink and sign it and be there.
The thing with Badger Books is, I mean, they're not perfect. So you would still have to print a paper poll book in case the system goes down. So there are pluses and minuses. Again, I was looking for efficiencies to have election day processing work quicker for the voter and to get the results at the end of the night when everybody really is looking for them. So that concludes what I, my two priorities.
Diane, I have one thing I'd like you to look into. Can you pick maybe three different communities and look at the clerk labor that's used in similar populations? And if you take the, our growth rate over the last 10 years, it's 1.67% over the last 10 years. So I'd like to understand how other communities are doing it and whether that need, are we in the average? Are we above average? Are we below average compared to a few other communities? If you could bring that back to the council this summer, that would be great.
Now, I had 16.7% growth. You said 1.67.
I'm the average.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Because I'm just looking from year to year, the average, because you gave us 10 years.
Right.
And I just took the average. So on average, we're growing 1.67%. So I'm trying to figure out if we do need another full-time person, yes or no? I don't know. But I'd like to get a little more details to help us make a decision. I think that would help council.
Sure.
Cool. Thank you very much. Next up.
Thank you.
Economic Development.
Cut his four down to two for us.
The other ones I'm going to do, they'll continue to happen. You know how I operate. Thank you for letting us do this. Again, economic development and tourism lump them together. Obviously, we want to continue to move the community forward. My four priorities, as you saw in the memo, were, and as we've kind of looked at this, establish a city communications marketing assistant position. We're working through an intern for several years. Implement redevelopment master plan, I'll share with you, facilitate key redevelopment areas, as well as planning coordinate community celebrations that are upcoming. So I think we've seen through the last several years of using the intern, it has not just been an element from the tourism, but a marketing standpoint has purely been an importance to the organization, and those benefits have been seen by all departments. We need, as our community is very tech-savvy, is interested in that connectedness and in engagement that that individual brings to the table as it relates to this. So really, what I'm looking for is consensus. I don't have anything to compare it to, to give you numbers. I would need consensus. Is this a direction we want to go? So I can work with Tony, work with Carlos and Detman of what would be competitive as it relates to this type of a position, to continue to stay relevant in the community, and so on and so forth. I'll skip the video. So as you're well aware, the CDA has been working on several things. One of them, most recently, is the, with UWM-CDS. As we continue to grow in different parts of the area, we always need to be looking towards the future. Five years, 10 years from now, what are those other areas of development or redevelopment that we can continue to progress as a community? They develop the the future scenario out there. So I think budgeting some dollars to the CDA to be able to promote this redevelopment area to developers would be an advantageous thing for the future tax-based growth, as well as attracting development within an area within a walkable distance to downtown. Obviously, promotion, consistent with the strategic plan, promoting those key development areas. Obviously, we're working on Old Highlander now. Part of that is going to take a considerable amount of effort to make that ski hill sports complex continuing to move forward. Obviously, we're in the thick of or continuing to develop the Olympia Fields area. And as you well know, we have a group that has purchased 65 acres in the Paps Farms, which will become some form of economic development and development project. Community celebrations, we are starting, actually in this year, and into '24 and into '25, we have some very significant things happening in relationship to the city. The 85th anniversary, the world premiere of The Wizard of Oz, the whole effort potential redo of the plaza, putting more attractions in there, putting additional things to bring people back on a more continual basis, although they continue to come. And then also in 2025 is the city sesquicentennial anniversary. So does that become a week-long event, a year-long event? All of those things will start. But there will likely need to be a pool of dollars, not just from tourism, from other pieces, to be able to make some of those things happen. That's it. Was that clicking up?
That's awesome.
Wow.
Beautiful.
You want to see the video? That one, I don't know if you saw. That's why I picked.
Thank you. Finance and IT, Lori.
Oh, sure, I will.
Okay, so what I have for you today is really IT department. I don't have any upcoming large expenditures for the finance department.
Okay, you can sit down.
Our new software is about three years old now. It has proven to give us some efficiencies. As you know, we reduced our staff shortly after getting that software. And so far, things have been going along pretty well, so we're good. However, IT department is what I want to talk about tonight. The number one thing that we have to look at, and we may have to look at that this year instead of next year. The citywide phone system. We did put in on Avaya phone system in 2017, but the manufacturer has declared bankruptcy. There are no parts or support for our phone system. So currently, if something breaks, we are searching eBay for parts for what we have. And it's a big deal because if our phone system goes down, we're out of business here. So we're currently looking at new systems. The big change in phone systems is we put a lot of money in our phone system when we put it in. The good part is, we already have all the fiber in, you know, all of that kind of stuff is reusable. The, you know, servers will have to be remade, but that's not real expensive. The biggest thing is, all of the phone systems now have changed from you purchase a phone system, it's $200,000, to you subscribe to a phone system and you pay monthly. So right now, we're looking at a couple of different proposals that have come through that range to from about $40,000 for hardware and then ongoing about $1,200 a month for the phone system, which $1,200 to $3,000, depending on which system that we take, which isn't too different than now, except that we already have, you know, we, like I said, we have the network in, we have the infrastructure mostly in. And we currently pay $1,100 a month for our IP phone system. So it's not a huge change, but we will probably have to sink about another $40,000 into just the hardware kind of thing. So that's coming up.
That includes a safety building, right?
Yeah, yeah. That would be citywide. That would be citywide.
Does that include either the fire stations?
No, fire stations, they're not part of the city's infrastructure. So, yeah, but it would be the police and parks and the utilities and the library and everybody. We're all on, well, the library isn't on our system, but every other department is on the same system.
Are there newer systems that are not landline-based?
These will not be landline-based. You can't even find them anymore.
So it's going to be all cell phones of some kind?
It's going to be, there's desk phones, but you can opt out of a desk phone and just use your computer. I know the IT guys will likely do that. Some people that don't use their phone very much. The other thing that's kind of nice about the new systems that they have with our laptops, if we're working from home, or if I'm working down at the utility, I still have my phone.
It's right there in the computer.
It's right there in my computer. So, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a little bit of a change. I think the subscription system is just the way things are going these days, which kind of helps us from not having to sink a lot of money into, you know, having to worry about upgrades because as long as we're subscribed, we're upgraded. So that's a phone system. Yep.
The only concern I would have is, on an annual basis, they are going to increase your cost.
Yeah, so currently, we're looking at three-year contracts, which is as far out as they'll let us go right now. But it would be, we'd have a set cost for three years, and then we'd have to move on after that and see.
You're right, though. It's going to increase over time.
It will.
Absolutely. So it's going to be really cheap now, but then three, five years, we're going to be spending probably the same money that we would have spent if we had just purchased the thing, if that's even possible.
Yeah, it's like, right now, it's really not even a possibility through a service to, like, purchase your own. You really have to go through a service now.
How many services are out there? I'm sorry.
You know, currently, we've looked at, we've looked at five different ones. Some are kind of familiar sounding. There's some that work right through Microsoft Teams or Ring Central. Gordon Flush has a service, you know, they started with copiers and now they're into all of the different office things. So basically, we're looking at proposals. We'll compare them. We'll talk about them and see. But end of the day, they're all really similar. It's a, it's an IP phone system. They all work the same. They all do the same things. So, yeah, we just kind of got to figure out what's the best value, and I want a company that's been around for a long time.
Have you gone to the AT&amp;T's?
Yeah. And AT&amp;T's like all cell phones now. Yeah. But, yeah, so we'll bring more of that forward. My only, you know, the only conundrum right now is, you know, the phone system's working fine right now. I don't expect that it's going to crash or anything, but if it does, I don't know. So I'm thinking that this is a sooner, not later.
I agree. I think you should start looking at costs right now.
Yeah. Currently, in the IT budget and capital, we had allotted, I believe it was $30,000 this year for IT upgrades, unnamed IT upgrades, because you never really know what's coming up. So there are some capital dollars in the budget currently. So I'll work with Mark and we'll get those quotes in, and then we'll start working on it. Makes me nervous knowing that it could just go and then we're out of business here.
Any comparisons to other communities that are similar to ours?
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're doing. We're checking in with the other, you know, every department has a statewide organization. So does IT. So we're checking with that GIPA group, so that's the Wisconsin IT group, and seeing what other people are doing and using and recommending as well. Okay? So number two, workflow software. So we're currently using OpenGov for some transparency software that you're going to be seeing on May 15, when we do our quarterly update, financial update. We've been talking, I know, there's just so much development in the city, so many permits, so many things going on. And the thing with development that comes in the city is it touches every department. And every department has things that need to be done because of a development that comes through. There's timelines and, you know, deadlines and contracts and assessments and, you know, everybody has something. So what we're trying to do is come up with a workflow. So when something comes in, usually it starts in the planning department, but that it gets assigned to every department, so every department gets done what they need to get done. It doesn't come up as a surprise later. We're making sure that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. And there's something that's actually keeping track of that, gives the city administrator and the mayor a look at, where are we with every development that comes in? I don't have a cost on that yet. There's three different softwares that we're looking at. OpenGov is leading the way in my mind right now, but we'll spend some time with the other departments and take a look at that software. And, but that's something that's coming up on the horizon that is useful for the city, all city departments. And the last one, IT support position. So currently, the IT department consists of one full-time network engineer and one full-time support person. IT continues to evolve. Every department is getting new software and new technology needs, especially the police department and the utilities, who currently take up all of our one-time, full-time person, who is stretching out to help anybody else in the city. So that's a goal that is coming up, you know, it's a thing that we need. It's something that we have to look at. What I'd like to do with this is to have another support person. So one of them is an expert in the police software and spends most of their time with that, and then other cities departments as well. And the other one is an expert in all of the utility softwares and then also spends time with the other departments as well. We'll look to split that position with utilities. And that's everything for me.
Lori, can you also look into the IT component of live streaming, our committee meetings and our council meetings? We have a lot of problems where the live feed is not working.
Yeah.
And so if you can look into that, that would be great, too.
Absolutely. And I really do want to have a discussion about that, too. And, you know, the pros and cons of live streaming. Okay?
Thank you. Next up, human resources. And you guys, this is all casual, so just chime in if you have a question or something that you want to ask our department heads.
So good evening, everyone. I have three pieces of good news for you. I don't have anything to build, any equipment to buy or any things to buy. I'm going to stay within budget for two of my items, and I'm only going to take a few minutes of your time. So the big piece is keeping the wages competitive and the benefits competitive. The ability to attract, motivate, retain our talented and hard-working employees is critical. I think in the next three to four years, we're going to see a lot of our senior management team leave. So we got to make sure, and right now, it's currently high, so it's still evolving, so I don't have a number to give you. So once the data is obtained, we'll make some recommendations for you for the budget. So my last two pieces of information for you, things that I'm looking at, is... My last two pieces of information for you, things that I'm looking at, is for 2024, our software is going away for applicant tracking and performance management. So we're looking at replacing that software. I believe I can do it within budget, and we're looking at some, some different options, but I think we can do it within budget. So with that, that's all I have.
That's one piece of software?
It's applicant tracking and performance management.
Performance management, I can say personally, is really poor, because I have to do his review, and I, it's...
You'll find that to be a common theme for a lot of organizations, nobody's happy with their software, so.
So, a request I have, knowing that wages are our biggest expense, right, and not knowing where, you know, cost adjustment might be, could you, and we've already had a few different positions presented tonight, would it be possible for you to just give us a range of, if all the salaries went up 2.5%, 3%, 3.5%, 4% next year, what would that mean? As I just think about the, you know, in that, what the new value we're going to have, we're not going to have a lot to spend, so knowing at this time that we've got $350,000 worth of increases coming at us, or whatever that is, would be really helpful as we kind of evaluate some of these other things and start stacking up.
Well, we already, we always have, we've had COLA for the last few years, no matter what, right? So in addition, you're talking about additional?
No, I'm talking about just COLA.
Oh, I see.
Just trying to look at the different, the different stages.
Depending where COLA comes in.
Gotcha. Yeah, that makes sense.
I think that, that would be a nice approach.
And we do that during budget.
We do that during budget. We tell them how much we're proposing, and then we also...
First time in February.
We could know that, I'd like to know that now.
When what you'll be hearing in the news is more shared revenue and things coming forward, but to Matt's point, we have increased operating costs every year, so I think that's where you're getting that, correct?
Okay. Now, the shared revenue will be fine, but it's not going to be as, it might not be as helpful as it is for other places like Milwaukee, where they, they're going to not only get the shared revenue, but also raise, be able to raise sales tax, which we, we can't do.
Thank you, Tony. Library, please.
We're rocking Roman now.
So just to kind of take a quick question, is this helpful so far, council?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, so I'm a new face for many of you. My name is Jenny Fidler. I'm the interim director at the library. The memo that I'm presenting was written by Betsy Black before her departure. So the first priority listed in the memo is about staffing. The library is always aware of our staffing, we're always, it's always in our mind, always analyzing it. And in the memo, there are a couple of examples of various changes we've made over the past two years or so, with a small restructure and analyzing other aspects of our staffing. So what we're looking at this year is specifically in the focus of looking at our reference department. Our head of reference is coming up with some ideas on how we could make our reference positions a little bit more attractive that would reduce turnover, and then also looking to use some budgeted hours towards assistance in youth services programming. As one of the restructures that took place in 2021, we were able to have a staff member be able to focus on adult programming, and we have seen amazing numbers over the past year and a half in our adult programming, such as providing 60 adult programs in 2019 to 137 in 2022. That's 128% increase. We've also had amazing attendance increase in those areas, 889 attendees in 2019 and 2,462 attendees at adult programs. That's 177% increase. We would love to be able to give more support to the planning, the running of our youth services programs. One area that we currently see a gap is being able, the number of programs that we offer school-aged children and families. We know that families are consistently looking for safe, fun, and economically friendly activities to do on the weekend, and that's something that the library can offer. It's a part of our mission, serving our community with both educational resources and popular resources. And so that is where our staffing analysis is coming into play this year. The second point on our memo is the space needs analysis. So this coming Saturday is the Bookbinders Ball, the establishment of the Vision Fund by the Friends of the Library, and the funds raised in this event and future fundraising are meant to fund the space needs analysis that we would like to do in 2024. So the reason that it is in this memo is because this project will take a great deal of staff time. The third point in the memo is about our collections. So when we use the term collections, that refers to both physical books, audiobooks, magazines, and it also refers to e-media, such as ebooks and e-audiobooks. And we are seeing some great numbers in this area. So for example, in e-media, we have seen some pretty amazing growth. We have two services that are available to community members for digital resources, one of which is called Overdrive. We saw a 32% increase in checkouts from 2019 to 2022. The second service is called Hoopla. Now that began in the spring of 2020, so the numbers aren't quite as consistent as, as Overdrive, just because that had a lot more history and following at that point in time. But between 2020 and 2021, we saw a 57% increase and, and a 15% increase from 2021 to 2022. So we have, last year, there were about 4,500 checkouts on Hoopla. Now, those are the quantitative numbers. Qualitative comments that we receive from community members is wait times. So even though an ebook, you think of it as maybe kind of being limitless, it's digital, that's not how copyright works. So, so we do know that patrons are concerned about wait times. Yes? Literally my armageddon. Nope, nope, just kidding. Okay. So we're seeing that demand for e-media grow, and there's no indication that it's going to slow down. Also, in our physical, physical circulation, the physical books, physical DVDs, audiobooks, that has had a slower recovery point since the pandemic. But great news, our first quarter in 2023 reported higher circulation than in the first quarter of 2019. So again, we're still seeing high demand for these physical materials. So being able to meet the needs of our community members is part of the library's mission. And so that is why we're always looking at these numbers and seeing where do we need to budget or, you know, change some of our focus. But so this year, looking at our collection lines is one of our priorities. So libraries are fantastic resources for their communities, and some of the numbers they have are unfortunately pre-pandemic. Those are the numbers that are out there that we have access to. But the Institute for Museums and Libraries in 2019 reported that Economowoc Public Library spent $43.59 per capita, and that's for the service population. Now, looking at other libraries, or the average across Waukesha County, that number goes up 8% per capita to $47.96. And again, please remember, these are 2019 numbers. So looking at this comparison, Economowoc Public Library has been responsible with the funds that we have been provided with, and we're very proud of the services we've been able to provide to the community. Additionally, every library institute in 2018 did an analysis of return on investment for public libraries, and for every dollar invested in Economowoc Public Library, returned a $7.48 return in services. So again, we highly, we take very seriously the services that we provide for our community, and so programming, collection, a lot of the other services that we do to help the workforce and provide technology resources for the community is all a part of our mission.
Just real quick.
Some questions, yeah.
Yes.
One, I, I'm glad you guys highlighted the self-checkout, because it's actually, is in my mind of one of the things I want to talk about in a couple of weeks. I, I think the library, and I know you're brand new to this role, I think we need to try to emphasize that self-checkout. It's really, really easy.
Yes.
And nobody uses it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you guys know this. I mean, very few people use it, it's off to the side, and I think there's got to be some vision to, we were told that with, we spend the money, this will help us, you know, and it's very expensive. You just drop like your pile of books on, you scan your card once, you just drop them on and they all check out. You don't have to scan them separately. It's really a cool system, and we spend a lot of money, so I'd like us to emphasize that more.
Yeah, one, one thing that, if I'm out on the floor and I see there's a line at circulation, I'll do my best to approach someone, hey, are you interested in trying our self-checkout machines?
You got to force people to use it, though. So, the one way you force people to use it is reduce your presence at circulation.
Okay.
And put those front and center. So I think it's something that we should seriously consider. I would add an extra machine if it could mean reallocating staff to other things in the library, because that's the way of the future. I mean, you go into an airport, you go to Amazon, if you've got an Amazon account, you walk into the Amazon store, you grab a bag of chips, walk out, it automatically, you know, we're there, we have the machines to do it, we just have to emphasize it. So that was one, that's great. So I'm, I hope you guys look into that more and emphasize it more and really utilize it. And I'm going to, I did ask Lori for some more numbers on what we spent on that, I think, three years ago, two years ago? So I've asked Lori for some numbers on that, because I think it's an important aspect of moving us forward in the library systems, you know, and being innovative. So, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had a question.
Yes.
First of all, I apologize, I'm flying blind. I was not given the memo you keep referring to.
Okay.
But on the staffing that you talked about, how many people, are you, so are you saying you're looking to hire X number of people?
I do not, not hiring additional people. It would be reworking some of the hours we have, potentially budgeting for some more part-time hours. That would, and then also, so like right now, we have four part-time reference staff, and so that number could decrease if we moved some hours more towards one of those positions to make it more attractive, especially for someone who's looking for more part-time hours.
Okay.
But I don't have the specifics at this point in time.
Well, thank you very much. Anything else?
Jennifer, the whole packet was under the committee, the whole minutes?
Yeah, I didn't get a committee, the whole packet.
This is all I got in my packet, was the...
You had to download it, or...
No, I got it in my packet.
Oh, you did get it in your packet? I didn't get it in my packet.
I got mine.
I didn't, but I just downloaded it.
You didn't get the memo either, Jess?
Not in my packet, but it was online.
Yeah, so some people got it in the packet, some people didn't, apparently.
I had it downloaded.
We'll check into that.
I just printed mine.
The number you gave on the programming, you said there was an increase in how, what percentage?
So, in 2021, we did a restructure of some staffing, and that allowed a staff member to provide, to give more time towards focusing on adult programming. So prior to the restructure, so again, we have to leave out 2020 numbers, 2021, but in 2019, we offered 60 programs for adults. And then in 2022, we offered 137 programs for adults, and so that's an increase, the number of programs available, both educational and popular programs, that's an increase of 128%. And then we also, looking at attendance, saw a change from 889 to 2,462. And the, a lot of the programs that are provided for adults on a monthly basis were regularly seeing wait lists. There's more interest than we have space in these programs.
Like a 170-something percent increase?
177% increase.
What is the cost increase, you know, between that offering, that additional number of programs? Do you know? I've just, I mean, because I'm just wondering if it, if it all balances out, or in the end, we're still spending more on the programs than we're getting in attendance, trying to work that out.
So, our, so our programming budget, I believe, actually... Shannon, could you help me?
You can, you don't have to give this to me right now, but this is just something that I'm, you know, that, that I'm thinking about.
Okay.
And that, and then the other piece I was going to throw out there is, did you say programming is something you wanted to increase again this year? Is that one of your top priorities?
So, yes, that is the, well, it's a part of the staffing examination that we're doing.
Well, and I guess when, when I would look at priorities, to me, the staffing, it should continue to be staffing the library in those core hours, so we can have the library open, you know, during the hours we currently have. So that should be the priority above adding more programs, in my, in my opinion.
Okay.
And so that's, because that was one of the, you know, the issues we had in this last budget, and, and that should, you know, that's, I think, what really matters to the largest part of the community. At least, you know, the constituents I interact with, which isn't everybody, honestly, but, you know, everybody, we all have different constituents.
And you can provide that information, just email it to Mark and he can distribute it to everybody here. That'd be great.
All right.
Let's move on to park and rec.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget forestry, Mayor.
And forestry. I like trees.
All right. We have four of them. I limited it from about 59 priorities down to four. The first one is for Alderman Mulder, transitioning Champion Field to Northeast Regional Park. So our department's been working with Economowoc Softball Association and the Five O's org to work on some potential fields, which I'll show you in a second. Thanks to MSI and MSA for doing a lot of work for free for us. So MSI is going to, I'll show you the, the renderings they've produced, and MSA is going to produce some cost estimates for us at the June Parks and Rec Board Meeting, which will be held out at Northeast Regional. We did that a year ago, I think it's going to be nice to see progress. We have pickleball courts, we have the new restrooms being constructed and potentially this rendering. And then Joe's going to be talking about this a little bit later, but it also ties in with utilities' potential future use of Champion Fields. So I have two renderings, this just gives you, this is a very conceptual plan. This is the current pickleball courts, here's the restroom or construction. Right now, we're showing some type of four complex, two smaller fields and two larger fields, which would accommodate adults and youth. There's potential for extra fields in the future, multipurpose, but right now, we're focused on these four. Here's a little closer view of it. So here's the parking lot behind Meadowview School, shows the complex, lots of more details to come. But again, June, our next park board meeting, we'll have much more discussion about this topic. Yes.
There isn't, this might be for someone else, but is there going to be another connector on the north side of the, that goes to P, so that there isn't just, Wayland Drive isn't the only...
Eventually, yes.
Service road?
Roadwise.
And would that go right on that green line there?
Yeah, I think it's this extended, approximately.
And that'll go up to K or to P? Hold on. K.
K. Oh. Yeah, right now, they're showing both, but the county has to approve accesses, so. All right, second one, improving DPW slash utility slash parks yard area. In the budget for this year, we have removing the old maintenance building and transition yard area, but to do that, there has to be a transition to some other area, and I'll show you some photos. So our short-term needs are security fencing gate, which I'll show you, a spoils containment area, and future cold storage. So here's our current, we have some storage in this building, mostly stores asbestos and mold. And then this is our entryway into our yard, which we have now closed off to the public and to contractors. And right here, which doesn't show up in the picture, but we have put the mulch area, it's free mulch for our residents, they can get this without having to go in the gate. So that you'll see at the yard currently. This is the backside, this is the park side on the DPW side of our building. We do have a manual gate, but it's not used because it gets left open, I can't tell you which department, which follows me or soon follows me, does that. But what we think, we need to go to a wastewater gate type of the utilities on electronic. These are our gas pumps right here, so this is wide open to the public currently, not a great idea.
Is there code on the gas pump?
Sure, but just having access to it.
87 octane, at least?
You have to have your card, but just have, you can't just pull up and empty it, but it's not the greatest idea. We have a lot of gaps in our fencing, so there is some fencing, some old fencing. Right here is where the New Landscape Supply Storage Building is, here's our cold storage, but this needs to be fenced off, gated up to here. So that's, you'll see it in 2024 capital budget coming up. This is back in the yard, we have a lot of spoils, this comes from the boring equipment that Joe's staff uses, comes from our staff when we vac holes for trees and many other things. It's just sloppy, messy stuff that needs to dry out, and we don't have a space for it. So we really need to look at a containment, it's kind of like a manure holding tank that It's kind of like a manure holding tank that dries it out, that you can then drive off with it or truck it out. And then this shows our current cold storage building, and this is the new landscape supply storage from the back. Great facilities are gonna help us a lot, but we continue to have many, many pieces of equipment for all of us outside in the elements, in the winter especially. So we're looking into another additional cold storage. We do have all the property for this, on our own property, but again, it's facilities we'll, we'll need. That's two. This is three. So these are things we talked about previously, but provide annual operating budget funds for two items that are coming online for 2024. One is the Econoac Rotary Splash Pad, which our group, our committee is doing a great job on. And the tentative plans to construct it starting spring of 2024, so it's ready by, we'll say, June or July of next year. But with that comes a lot of water costs, some electrical, and there's a little bit of maintenance. So right now, we've guessed it, I think we said this a year or whenever we brought it forward, it was about 15,000 annually. And then we also have, we'll have the new restrooms at Northeast Regional Park in the pavilion, which working with Finance Department on budgeting. We don't know exactly what that's gonna be, but there's water, sewer, electric, some maintenance costs with that as well. So just something we want to make sure it's high and tight in our, our eyes going forward. Here's the latest rendering of the splash pad, just to show it to you. I just sent them the $250,000 grant app yesterday to the DNR for law con funds. If we get that, this is gonna be the best splash pad in all of Southern Wisconsin, for sure. This is a cool piece that really no one else has. It's called a Water Journey. And it's a cool thing for little kids to play with and kind of change rivers and things. Lots of shade, great dumping bucket, the boat, lots of great features. Moving the trailhead over closer to the trail, better access. So we're excited about this project. And that's my latest picture I have, where you have the restroom project. It's a little further along than that, but that's also with the lift station, as you well know. They're pouring the floor, they have the utilities set there, but you'll see more progress coming up in the next couple of weeks or months. And lastly, just want to talk about the community center a little bit. So last year's budget, I don't want to set us up for failure in the future, but it was our highest revenue generating year of all time.
Excellent.
Hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, which I think our budget was 145. Direct expenses were 121,000 and change. I did not include Paige's salary or wage, she's the only one that gets accounted for partially to this. But this is all the part-time staff, all the supplies, everything that goes with it. So it was a very good year. Projects coming up this spring, within the next month, the rest of the railing project and the surfacing in the front will get completed. But we have a number of other things happening that need work. That would be the backside ports and surfacing in the steps, some balcony repairs, some concrete repairs. Always looking at refinishing floors inside, and the front needs a, not that it's super expensive, but a heat tape area. So just give you a couple of quick views. Here's the new railings in the front. They look fantastic. They're gonna do great. But as you can see, then the staining of the rest of it. So surfacing, a lot of it will be, it's epoxy flooring, like we just put in all the restrooms. It holds up really well to the elements. It's actually not a bad price on it. So we're looking at doing the front side, coming up in the backside, including these beautiful steps in the future. This is actually underneath our balcony, second floor balcony on the first floor. We have some water damage and such, which Don for maintenance is gonna be looking at, but it's things like that that come up that we have to look at. Sidewalk, they got, port's been cracked since I've been here and probably longer, so it's just unfortunate. And we just use it as is, but at some point, we have to relook at that. This is our floor after a number of uses. This is our staff trying to get it back to a semblance of decent polish, but it's, it just gets heavily used. So that's what I have for you. Happy to answer any questions. Thanks again for your support of our department.
Any ideas on generating more revenue for the community center? I know we've done a lot of things lately and it does seem like it's, the revenues are coming in, but any other ideas?
Sure. Come on and spend some more money, Andy. Paige and staff have done a great job of booking it for lots of events. When you hear people, you might hear this at the next meeting, and with my friends from the Yacht Club. You know, we're trying to work with them, but when they can pay us $300 or a wedding can pay us $3,000, that's something we have to balance. So it's just something I want you to understand, as we try to increase revenue, we have to look at those higher generating events. So that's, that's a piece of it. We've been lucky, we've had the church now pretty consistently, but they're gonna be leaving.
Yeah.
And going to Old St. Matt's in a month or so. So that's been a steady income. We'll look for something like that. That's really nice to have. So yeah, it's definitely continuing to increase the events, but, and we, last year, we, we increased the fees. And we'll look at doing that again because there's still a high demand for it.
So when, when the community center was designed, there was a mistake made, which was not putting in grease traps and other things needed for a restaurant at that lower level. Has there ever been additional thought to doing something with that lower level, other than just letting it most of the time sit there vacant? And actually leasing it out to a restaurant or a bar or someone? I mean, it's, it's probably one of the coolest spots in the entire lake. And it's, it's rarely used. They've got the nicest bathroom on the lakes, never used. Instead, we have Buddy's Beach over there with, you know...
I won't say it's rarely used because we do rent it a lot. And we use, so there's two rooms downstairs. The community room gets rented a lot. The other one's used for programming, mostly. I know they explored the idea of doing more, I won't say restaurants or bars, but more like a paddle boat rentals and that kind of equipment out of it. I don't think that's warranted. If you've got somebody that's in mind that might want to look at a bar or restaurant, that could be worth talking about. It's, it's definitely used though heavily by our rentals right now. So it does get used, but if that's, if you can bring in a hundred thousand dollars from that, we'd certainly look at that.
Well, I'm just thinking, versus me trying to find someone to go rent the space, but, you know, putting it out in the community that we're interested in doing something more with that space, really. It, whatever we're doing with the paddle boat and the other rentals probably doesn't generate a lot of income for us down there.
We don't use that space for the rentals. It was talked about, I think, originally 10 years ago, I was looking at renting that or leasing that out to somebody like that, a provider.
There are a lot of, I mean, there are, there are, there are a lot of bars and restaurants in the communities. But I don't know, just throwing it out there. I mean, I, I know that we didn't put in the grease trap, just as necessary, but it's one of the coolest spots in the city right there. It's beautiful. And we just don't, you know, it's like, you know, somebody comes in and rents it for like a bachelorette party or something, or a wedding shower for 300 bucks. It's like, eh, I don't know.
You, so no one, I guess it would be you had bathrooms in there, strategic plan for the downtown area. And we're gonna be another summer and probably next summer now, before we would have any with the Rockwell Project, if that even moves forward. Any considerations there? Mark, any considerations? You've talked to anybody else about it? It seems like, it seems like a big gap, as I read through this, that like, after really two years of discussing it, you think you had something coming in a couple of different places. Now we're back to no action anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion is we've all kind of wait and see with the development, right, as far as, you're talking permanent restrooms?
Yes.
Okay, because actually, we are planning on putting one porto out there, kind of tucked up against the green fence, not in the lake, but towards the lake. Just to see how that's used for the summer and help with some of the normal traffic. But permanent restrooms, you guys gotta tell me what you want to do.
And that's two weeks from now we can talk about.
Right. We will.
I can't wait. Any other questions?
Oh, thanks.
I guess my, my request is if you could work a little bit with Bob Duffy and see if there's some other types of ideas that we could use that lower area for. So I think, you know, we've talked about that for three years. Maybe there's something else creative. Or if any of the other department chairs, if you can think of anything, please let Craig know. Because we're losing a significant amount of money from the church leaving. And I think we need to kind of think outside the box here a little bit. Thank you.
Actually, do you have one more about the Prairie Creek, the Northeast Regional Park? I've been talking to a few people out there, getting their ideas. Are you, I know you're planning on doing a neighborhood, you know, listening session with that, I think. Do you have that, like, because it seems like plans are moving pretty quickly towards some of this. Do you have kind of plans to have that meeting?
Neighborhood meeting?
Yeah.
As far as Northeast Regional?
Northeast Regional.
Not, not scheduled. We want to go to that park board meeting first and, and scare them with a big number of what this complex could cost and any other improvements. Really talk through it there and then take the steps. But yes, it's definitely an important piece.
Great. Thank you.
I promised it, so it has to.
Well, then we gotta do it.
You promised me, I promised them, so I...
You can break your promises.
Planning and zoning. Mr. Gallo, I was really impressed as I read through all of your items until there was one that actually cost money at the end. But my hat's off to you. Nice job.
You put the no additional budget impact ones first up.
Thanks. Well, some of you did not see the memo, apparently, but I'll just kind of talk about what the planning department is up to and what our priorities are and some of the budget impacts. But primarily, we're a, a public service department. We're customer related, customer service. We don't buy anything. We have nothing in the capital budget and we buy very little in the operational budget. We work primarily on development applications and projects. For some projects, we have hired outside consultants, so there's some money there. But I'm asking tonight to, to talk about, what are your priorities for our future projects? Between this summer, I, I have Rachel coming back, the intern, she's very good. I've set up a few things that I would like to see accomplished, our subdivision and plating ordinance upgrade. It hasn't been upgraded since, I think, 1982. The historic preservation ordinance, something we've talked about. I, I have a draft ordinance. We've sent it to the state. I would like to bring the state guy in to talk to you guys. The signage ordinance, just seen some tweaks on that, a fee study. These are all things that we can do in-house that don't cost anything. But I really want to get your feedback on the bottom three, so I separated them. An accessory dwelling unit ordinance, I'll talk about that, what it is. And then there's two things that I would like to put in the budget next year. I'll tell you what those are and how much they're gonna cost or what I'm asking. So let's talk about accessory dwelling unit. This is an ordinance that we do in-house, okay? But is this a priority of the common council or are we just spinning our wheels on it? It's something, kind of a big policy decision? Since I have the floor, I'm gonna talk about it. ADU is a, a second form of housing unit on one property, okay? Sometimes it's referred to as like a mother-in-law suite. They come in all different shapes and sizes. We have about a dozen of them in the community right now, and I'm gonna show you a bunch of them tonight. And this is, the big thing for me is it's, it's, it's an alternative for attainable housing, accessible housing, affordable housing, whatever, whatever you want to call it. It is a chance and, and we could be a leader in that. And then finally, it is listed in the strategic plan and the, and the, and the planning goals. Here's an article, accessory dwellings offer one solution to the affordable housing problems. So this is a real thing. Here's what they kind of look like. They come in all different shapes and sizes. Tonight, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what they look like detached, but I know we have them attached and inside and garage conversions and things like that. But I just want to show you, because I know you're, if it's an ordinance, you're like, well, why do we need that? Well, we have a bunch here that are existing. This is the one on, at 421 Oakwood Avenue in the back. And you might say, oh, that was an old garage. Well, it has a basement, okay? So it wasn't a garage. It was never used as a garage. It was always an ADU. It's a second unit that, that, you know, this is the unit, this is the primary house. This is what it looks like from an aerial photo, okay? So right now, it's two dwellings on one property. And they just got a variance last summer to build a garage in the back. Here's one on, on North Lake Road, a very old structure. It's fairly large. There's the primary structure. But you can see there's two dwellings on one property. Here, we have some cottages, you know, built probably 100 years ago. We're familiar with those on Greenland Avenue. That's the, now, the new primary building that was approved. So from an aerial photo, this is what it looks like. You got, you got two, two buildings down here at the lake, and then you have a, a primary building in this general area. Here's another one on Summit Avenue. And I just found these in, really, one afternoon. I just went out driving around and I found a few.
Move through them quickly.
Okay, I will. I was given 10 minutes, right?
It's five.
Okay. Summit Avenue, here's the primary building. There it is. That's what it looks like. And here's Summit Avenue here, you know, 24090 Summit. That's the primary building, and this is what it looks like on an aerial photo. So we do have these in, in the community. People call me all the time and they ask, can I build an accessory dwelling unit? Right now, I say, no, we don't have an ordinance. Here's one on Riverview Lane. This is the sixth one I'm showing you. Looks like a nice house. Here's the primary building. This is what it looks like on the lot. So it's another one. Here's one on Wisconsin Avenue in the back here. Here's another one on Wisconsin Avenue, a little cottage. So should we, should we draft an ADU ordinance, bringing the non-conforming structures into compliance? This would allow for others to construct, develop an approval process and requirements. I was thinking of conditional use, give the neighbors notice, put them only in the TR zoning district. The newer subdivisions, the covenants probably wouldn't allow for that. Something that we would allow, create setbacks and all that. Okay, moving on. Cost of Community Services Study. This was removed from last year's budget. This is really not for me. This is for you, okay? We've got a lot of growth happening. We've heard that theme tonight. We have a lot of projects in the pipeline right now that are fairly major and significant. I'm asking for 25,000 in the, the budget coming up. This would be, again, for you. It's a proactive approach to land use planning. It's to understand the fiscal balance of land consumption, including growth development and redevelopment. I put on the cover of Della Fields. I'm gonna hand out the executive summary from theirs. You don't have to read it now, but I, I wanted you to have a take home, I guess, to think about it. You, you pay for what you get. If you put in less money, you can get less. But in the, in the response, what Della Fields executive summary said is their homes come in at, at $500,000. So they're covering the cost of their community service. Their, their taxes are paying for it. They, the, the report would give you a plenty of analysis, a lot of numbers that they would crunch. And they would show you, you know, what is good for your community. Every community is different, so they'd have to look at ours. These come in all different shapes and sizes, you know. Here's one in Door County, a couple of towns. You know, and, and it's very basic, you know, residential cost is a dollar 16 for every dollar they get in versus other ones are, are less. Finally, my last priority is I'd like to put some money in the budget for GIS. The city, I'd be asking for about $20,000. It's a digital mapping database. Money is used to maintain what we have. We have a system in place and we would, should really maintain that. Plus, I'd like to create new tools, conduct analysis. So it'd be nice to, to have some money in there. I, I envision a dropdown menu. You, you click on a, on a, on a parcel and you could highlight the conditional use permit, the, you know, any, any zoning violation letters, any of the site plans related, any of the landscaping plans, that type of thing, all in a digital database. So my summary, I'm wrapping up. Accessory dwelling units should planning draft an ordinance. I know that's a policy decision, but it's, it's something on my list. Cost of Community Services, will you support that in the budget? And then GIS updates. That's all I have.
Question. So the units that you showed us that are non-conforming right now, how are they taxed from a property tax standpoint?
Sure, they're giving it value from the assessor. And then, you know, your taxes are based on your total assessed value of the property. I mean, I, I believe the assessor puts value on garages, sheds and everything. So they would come back with a value overall for the property.
Is there anything negative to the people that already have the non-conforming to, to bring them into compliance? Is there anything? I don't think so.
I thought it was good to show you just some of them. There's, there's more out there, but, so. The, the blue books sitting by your stations, those came this past week from Barb Dietrich. I think you can take those home with you if you're interested in a Wisconsin blue book.
Did she highlight herself in there?
They're expired. They're the old ones. They're from last year.
I know, from last year. That's why we got...
Yeah.
She had an older abundance of them.
Thank you, Jason. And to the Police Department.
All right, thank you. Here to discuss the top three budget requests from the Police Department in 2024. With that, we're looking at some new scheduling software, additional, addition of some tasers and some additional... additional, addition of some tasers and some additional training software, and the initiation of what's called the Flock Camera System. I can tell you that currently, our scheduling system contract expires in 2023. Our yearly costs are about, you know, $1,300 a year, which is actually very cheap for scheduling software. But you get what you pay for as well. So right now, we're unable to properly, you know, schedule third shift for officers over a 24-hour period. So basically, what we have to do is put them on, you know, for four hours on one shift and four hours on another shift to make it look like they're working eight hours so that we have the correct manpower on the street. There's some other challenges with it. There's difficulties of the officers accessing that through their phones and checking for updates on schedule changes as well. So we're looking, notified that the current system would go up to about $2,000. So we're looking at research for some quality schedule software. We've been in, looking around, and that is about $4,000 to $5,500 a year is what we're looking at. So it'd be an increase in our operational budget there. This is example of how it looks here. As you can see, it's kind of a mess of looking at different shifts and manpower issues and so forth. So as you can see, there's a third B shift and a third A shift just to make it work, so. Additionally, we're looking at, need to add three additional tasers to the budget. This is one of the expenses, obviously, that's coming from adding officers, being, making sure that we have accessibility for all of our officers to have a taser out on the street. Unfortunately, pricing for a taser is about $5,000 each. The officers are currently sharing some tasers. Special assignment days, we're running short on those.
Is that top of the line?
That is the latest model, yes. Top of the line, so.
Are you doing the subscription model?
I'm sorry?
Are you doing the subscription model through taser? Are you buying them outright?
We're buying them outright. Yeah, so it was, it was a better deal to buy them outright.
Do you rent them in Elmhurst?
We actually don't even have these ones. They're looking at upgrading, but they, they, just like everything else with the subscription stuff, they're trying to push you towards the subscription model. So you automatically get new ones when the new one comes out after three, five years, and it's expensive.
It adds on a lot of cost. And then we're looking at some Exxon VR Simware that is, excuse me, some training software where it's actually virtual reality. So the officers are put in scenarios and have to deploy the taser and so forth in that. And down the road, we'd be looking at that connected to a handgun as well, where they would get the virtual reality training, where they could access either a taser or a handgun at that point, so. Last one is the Flock System. This has become recently more popular down in our area, in our communities. Bonhominy Falls has this right now. Brookfield is installing this right now in their communities. It's a license plate reader. It's great for solving a lot of, a lot of crimes that are going on. It's catching, you know, a lot of information off of vehicles that we normally wouldn't get. You know, it's helping us solve crimes. And Bonhominy Falls has had great success with it. And Brookfield, like I said, is just implementing it, so hopefully that'll continue with them. It's something that we're looking at, and with this Flock System, basically, they install the camera, you're looking at two, two of them at $3,000 each, so about $6,000 a year for a contract. So it isn't cheap. And then it's $150 to $650 a camera, depending on the type of installation that we have to do. What we would be looking at is installing two in our city, and then reaching out to businesses is what we're doing. What we would like to do is like the Fleet Farm, the new Sundex area, the parking lots over there, where they could join this program, and they actually pay the yearly subscription for the camera to be in their lot. So it has worked for Bonhominy Falls, and Brookfield has reached out to some of their businesses as well. This is a way to increase the cameras in the city, where, you know, they're getting better results and people feel safer in their communities attending those businesses as well. So it's something we're looking at on the horizon here.
So we, so, so for instance, my subdivision could pay, like, through the HOA to install a camera at our two entrances, and that would connect to you, and you guys would get that information, so if we have suspicious vehicle, we have a break-in, boom.
Correct, yeah. There would be the yearly fee that we would expect the association to pay, correct. But they can have that installed.
But that also be put at every stoplight? For those that are going through?
Expensive.
I mean, unfortunately, I can't write tickets off of camera for stoplight violations in the state of Wisconsin. I'd love to, but, but I can't. Yeah, so.
Don't let chief.
So, you know, for us, we're talking strategic locations of, you know, out by 67 to 94 for us. You know, you know, somewhere on Highway, you know, 16 coming into our community for our type of cameras.
So like Matt said, like in my subdivision, there could be on the egress, on the ingress, and then...
Correct, if your subdivision chose to pay for those cameras to be installed, the yearly fee, yes, you could have those.
You get little placards like you do with ADT that you could put out on the road that says, "The subdivision protected by Falcons."
I'm not sure, but I could make one for you.
I mean, I think, you wanna talk about...
It'll be good.
No, but it's, I think for subdivisions and for these businesses, that's, that's a big deal. What do you think?
I can tell you, we have one where, where I work, and we're implementing a second one. They've been huge in solving crimes. There's a fraud group that gets put out, and one of our detectives actually looked at a car and saw it didn't have a plate that they put out, but it had a piece of tape down the side. He could literally search that vehicle in color, and he got the license plate for that car two weeks earlier and solved the homicide in Milwaukee. So I mean, it's, it's a great system.
When did you wanna, okay, so where are we in the whole process of this now, getting this Falcon? If we are, is this something we have to budget out?
You know, this would be something that we, you know, we would start with the two cameras in next year's budget. So, you know, that's why I'd be requesting those funds be entered into our operational budget, 'cause it's a yearly cost for us.
If an HOA wanted it.
Well, right now, the only holdup right now was...
That's my question.
Was with the, with the state, and DOT has to approve cameras in certain locations. You have to get a permit. There was a struggle with that, but I think we, as police departments, have resolved that issue now, and now they started issuing all the permits. There was a backlog. So for us, if we wanted to move forward with this in next year, we could, you know, definitely work with the company. They're eager to work with us in this area. And, you know, start R2 and then get this out to the HOAs, the public, you know, and start moving along.
So we're still three years out.
No, I think we could be, we'd be, we would have ours up at operational.
Let me be more specific, I'm talking about the HOAs. So we're...
Depending, I don't know how many they have in stock. So I hate, that's my only, their resources, okay? Is, because like I said, they're doing Brookfield, doing this. So as far as HOAs are concerned, they might say they might be a year out on inventory to do those. Otherwise, maybe, you know, if they have them in inventory, they'll get somebody out in six months, you know, installing it, you know?
Can we handle load right now?
So.
I guess you'd have to get yourself...
We can, because a lot of it goes to Waukesha County Communications.
I mean, it'll hit on stolen vehicles, and it's not just Wisconsin. I mean, you can see your plate, if a car gets stolen and goes past a Flock system in Georgia. You can put up hot lists, so if you're looking for a specific car that's doing entry to autos at Burn, for instance, you can put a hot list, so it chimes and lets dispatch know and everything, so it's a great system, I'll tell you.
The Falls uses it a lot for all the stolen vehicles coming into their community from Milwaukee. You know, it's going off all the time for them, yeah, on that, so. So that's, oh, sorry about that. Quickly, capital for us, just to be, so everybody's aware, we are looking at 2025 to go down to replacing only one squad car a year. And really, that, they're hard to get right now. And because we are so delayed, we've gotten a lot in recently, and they're good, they're in good shape. So we're thinking about trying to reduce our capital down to one squad car a year, starting in 2025. And that opening up some of the capital that we had there as well. We are looking at the radio replacements in 25, radars in 2016. The only additional change was, we're presenting a changeover to one standard firearm and a red dot for the entire Police Department, which will be purchased by the department starting in 2024. Right now, we allow three to four different handguns in our department. There is no red dots, and we have different ammunition from 9mm, 40mm, 45mm. We need to streamline this for trading purposes and accuracy. And the red dot system is the latest and greatest thing, and pretty much most departments have it at this point. Currently, we, our officers, we tell them they have to buy their firearm out of their own dollar amount. We'd be looking to just change that, where as a city, we purchase a firearm, we know what it is, they're all the same.
Questions for Chief?
We actually talked about that firearm purchase, that's something I brought up years ago, of what do we do about versus making them spend their money on their firearms versus...
Yes, I was in support of it then.
I think it's a great idea, that sounds awesome.
The rifles are all, they're, yep, they're out there implemented as well.
And then just, Chief, just a brief, if you can give a brief update, Chief, myself and Mark, we've been meeting with the Oconomock School District about a potential additional officer. So there'll be two officers in the school system, middle schools and high school. If you wanted to share a couple of things briefly?
We, we worked with the school district on this. Currently, they pay 50% of the salary of the SRO up at the high school. We approached them and said, we need that increased to 75%. Both of them are 75 to 100% funded by the school district. They were receptive to that, and then I asked them, can we add another SRO to the intermediate schools? And working with Mark and the mayor, we asked them to pay 75% of that one as well. So currently, that would, if they're in agreement with that, it has gone across, so it'd be a wash on our budget at this point, so they're all in favor of it.
And they've, they've talked about it at their school board meetings as well, but just wanted to make sure you're aware. Thank you very much, Chief, let's move on to Public Works. Do you have more?
One more thing.
Oh, okay.
I just gotta invite everybody to the swearing-in of God.
Oh. Thanks.
Can I pet him? He doesn't look like Charlie though.
All right, Jason.
All right, thank you. It's always good to follow up nice new technologies, but hopefully this will be something worthwhile. So I put together a few things, some of these things are not brand new. They have been in our outlook here, in our capital output for a few years now. But I wanted to give you an update and kind of give you up to speed. Some of these projects are just not single years, and they will take a little bit of involvement. But the first one I wanted to kind of catch you up with is our Lapham Street Bridge replacement. This is a, right over the Oconomock River, just south of Washington Avenue. It's a 1950 old single girder, steel girder bridge. It's been, you know, used for years as a single lane. And I think this is not new, but I wanted to bring this up and give you a couple of updates onto this, is some of the things that have been going on. This is a new bridge that was applied for a grant in 2021. In 2022, the state found favor and awarded this bridge with a full replacement. So inside of that, it was proposed as it was going to be replaced with a bidirectional bridge to widen out the section. So some of the thoughts there is expanding some of the, you know, the local north-south traffic coming off of Washington, and then there's some discussion that's been going on for almost two decades to the subdivision to the south and being gated off. And some of the thought there was the gate was going to be reopened once the bridge could hold the capacity for the direction, or the bidirectional traffic. This is all in conceptual form right now. In fact, here's some of the outlines as we have just recently been working with the state on a three-party agreement with our grant. The first step that we've just been going through is such, searching and engineer for this replacement. From there, it kind of goes into a project scoping, a negotiation, and then a selection on the engineering firm. That all has to be completed by June, and then the engineering and the investigation will, will begin with that style. Construction would be roughly scheduled for late winter, early spring in 2025. Again, this was a grant, it was actually awarded as 100% cost for the engineering and the construction for just the footprint of the bridge. So the reason I kind of included this is there is some work outside of that parameter. So wanted to bring that together. Discussion, obviously, will have to be part of this. I just wanted to kind of present that, give that an update to you. So would it be your intent to remove that gate then, and have that be a through street? That would be the, that would be the idea, I think, that has been presented. There's a nice, you know, I've got a nice outline of almost a better part of 10 years of, of work and discussion with, with the city, the council, the subdivision, the intent. I mean, traffic impact studies, signal upgrades. Another intention going into my district somewhere?
There you go.
The third one.
I'm just glad it's not in our district right now.
It's actually our district.
There's something here for you.
Wrap them up on wrapping, that's you guys?
No, no, down on the bridge.
Let's keep, let's keep rolling, guys.
We're down, you're, you're in the valley, we're in the hills.
Let's, let's keep going, guys.
We have a committee meeting at 7:50. Should've put a map of the districts up. Yeah, so that was, that's to bring that up, obviously, some discussion there will be part of this process here. I guess I couldn't talk Public Works without road construction. So a lot of this stuff has been presented in the past. I'm not going to describe everything in our paving condition right now. This is a relatively old map, we've knocked off a lot of these projects. Some of the, you can kind of see the lower half of our pavement condition in red there. Some of these have already been done or will be done shortly, bolstering in capital. Some of those are of interest, I know. So that's kind of, just to give you a rough idea of where we're at, some of these, these thoughts as we're going through this and have presented this before in other places is, as we look into the budgeting and into the breakout of some of these projects, from an engineering standpoint, there is a very nice division line in how you break out some of these projects. Meaning, some of the more intense engineering, i.e. like on your large arterial roads, just by nature, require more engineering, more survey, more drafting skills than some of other of the projects, some of your local projects. You know, if you're doing a subdivision, some of those projects are not as intense from the engineering standpoint. Construction may or may not be, you know, arguably different, but from an engineering standpoint, I think it makes a lot of sense to kind of break these out. We kind of have two line items in our capital and operating budget right now. And to really make this a little more transparent in how we present some of the large projects from year to year to year to year, it makes a lot of sense, you know? For example, in a, in a five-year road, and, you know, don't take heart to any of these projects I've listed, but for example, you know, a Concord Road or a Silver Lake Road, Silver Lake Street, have very, you know, strong need for some survey work, drafting work, engineering, which would really trigger the need to hire out a engineering firm for, at this particular point. And that would allow a few things for us, is it would drive some of the need to present these earlier so that I can, you know, because they do take time. It does take 12 months sometimes to pull a project together. You just gotta scope it, not, and pull together a lot of the field work, design it, bid it properly. So, you know... So, you know, the last thing anybody wants to do is to under-design something or under-build something because of needs that we just overlooked. So I think these are worthwhile projects to really separate out and put them directly in our five-year budget. And I've done this for bridges, for road projects, you know, any large construction project, and it makes a lot of sense there. Rough estimate, you know, we're looking at like, we have like fifteen miles of arterial streets in the city. Just, just under eighty miles of local collectors-type streets. So, you know, to rebuild a, in an arterial street, you're looking at a million and a half dollars per mile. So those are types of things, you know, I think we've kind of plugged in about a million dollars to add to some of our funding. So I think the idea, you know, is to, is to capture the correct project, not just because it fits in the million dollars or more or less, you know? Sometimes I feel like a project might be larger in scope. We don't have a lot that are over a mile. But I mean, say, you know, you do a Concord Road, that's, you know, a mile of pavement. So I think it would be appropriate to start to budget those in particular for like one year. Silver Lake, half mile. And then just position those in the capital budget like that so that you would see that. We can plan on it, have the engineering the year before, you know, so it'd be kind of a rotating process. It's not something totally different than we've been doing. It just might be presented a little bit differently on uniform than the million, million, million that has been in the past. So that's kind of what that is. And again, this presents a different idea for us in the engineering is we will be able to maybe reach out to the engineering firms for the real specific type projects that it has a need and look at the more local projects internally. You know, say we are re-milling and overlaying a subdivision. It's not overly complex from an engineering standpoint. It's more or less, you know, providing the proper maps and graphics and, you know, labels and symbols. So not to dumb it down, but I mean, I feel like our office might be able to have opportunities to present type projects like that. So that's kind of, you know...
We got to move along, Jason.
All right.
No, it's all great stuff.
But inside of that, you know, the rotation of how this all will go is that the need for pavement, we're basically on a forty to forty-five year cycle of replacing every street. That's just basically, you know, what, what the amount of money is trying to achieve. And looking at how we can maintain our road systems in a tolerable fashion is kind of how I would describe it is, you know, yes, I can, I can push along a project forty to forty-five years, but is it tolerable? Do I want to drive on that? Do I want our buses on there? Do we want our kids on there? So those are types of things. So I've done a lot of different maintenance types projects and I feel there's a couple that would be worth the money. So that might be something I want to share and discuss inside of a budget like that. I, I quickly put out a couple of extra projects that are in our strategic plan already. They've been in there. Lake Bluff Drive Extension, I don't, this is not a new one. It's, it's been out there. There's a need to continue this. We're looking at trying to provide a, a new traffic impact analysis for this. That will be going on this year. And then some of the conceptual and design work of that would also be included inside of that. You can kind of see it is between the dead end right now on Lake Bluff Drive and connect over to the west here.
Jason, we own the property needed for that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, but the wetlands issue, there is a wetlands issue.
There's a number of challenges with these two projects, this one and the next one I'll show you. I'm just kind of laying it out as those might, those will be in there. And then obviously, you know, the things that go along with that. And the, the next one would be trying to achieve one of the goals that were set place in the strategic plan. It would be, you know, most likely with a trail-type system as we've been discussing for some time. You know, this is a, this is a multi-department thing. This is a multi-jurisdictional thing, feasibility. There's a, there's a number of different things that will have to be presented. Probably be looking at trying to get certain things in here. One option would be, this is the bridge over the creek. Basically, sitting in the nature hills, woods, I was standing and looking underneath the bridge is, you know, one thought. This is a project that Baxter Woman, Woodman did down in Illinois as they had a very similar thing. I'm not sure the clearance here might have been a little bit better. But you can kind of get the idea of where they would, you know, what might go on there. And then there also would have to be a crossing of the creek to try to get there. So those are just some, some thoughts to, to keep going, but that's kind of where we're at with Public Works. Any questions?
That would allow me to safely get to pickleball very easily, so.
It was our priority.
Baseball, no.
Or baseball, God forbid.
Questions?
We have two more.
Concord is just a, you know, blaring red flashing light that needs to get done. And out of all the projects you listed on there, those five that were in that category, Concord sticks out like a sore thumb from those, so. And I think of the majority of the council, I, I don't know, I can't speak for them, but I, I think we agree with that. So I hope whatever we can do to, because how much did we spend this last year on roads? It was a million, right? I mean, that, that was, or was it two?
Two million.
We had, we had roughly two million dollars dedicated.
And going forward, you're saying a million though, that you were looking at budgeting every year, right?
Yeah, I would like to position some of those larger projects inside the capital. Now, it might be more than a million.
Right.
I would like to maintain the one million that we currently have been dedicating towards that to some of the more local projects, subdivisions, and because those are going to be, those have to be, if we, we can't ignore those.
Right, 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 right.
And then try to position some of these other cap, you know, larger capital projects year by year by year.
I, I just look at the roads that we chose in this last cycle and think, you know, especially the newer ones out by the newer subdivisions and just look at that and say, you know, that's not right. It should, it should be conquered. That's where the priority should be right now. Not Celtic Pass Way and out, you know, where, where there's certainly less traffic. And the roads out there are already in good shape, so I don't get why we're building new, new roads where there's an area that already connects. Yeah, well, I can't remember. Was it capital? Is that what it was? Yeah.
Yeah, capital had another need that was kind of positioned in the twenty twenty-two.
Driving on capital and barely anybody's driving on capital, so.
We have a committee that starts at seven fifteen and we got two more presentations. So we can talk about this in two weeks under the look.
Yeah, well, I've been listening for almost, you know, two hours, so I think I can talk for a couple of minutes.
Oh, no, I, I'm just trying to keep us on schedule.
No, I got it. I've been listening plenty of it.
I'm not trying to cut anybody off. I wish we had more time.
Good evening, everybody. Top priorities, lead service lateral replacement. To date, we've, three-year, three-year program has now changed out three hundred and twenty lead services to homes. We've done more than that in our streets because we've been doing that for longer in the street program. We have about seven hundred and forty more to go, to get all the lead out of the community. Comes at a cost. If we got everything out our side and the private side, it's about seven million dollars to change all that out. So just what I want to highlight tonight, this is a strategic plan. It's been in a strategic plan for about four years now for safe drinking water in the community. It's worthy of having longer discussions about, but for tonight, I'm just going to touch on state of Wisconsin. Free monies have pretty much dried up. They're telling us we're not a disadvantaged community. So now we have to look at other funding opportunities if we want to continue. So that's discussions we will have to have if the council has the interest in pursuing other ideas on how we can get this done. We have some, but for the sake of time, we're not going to get into those tonight. But I just wanted to highlight it as in the strategic plan and we will be discussing it further into the budget process. I'm going to jump to the last one. That's also in the strategic plan. This has been in for about two years now and it is the utility building. They referenced Champion Field. And I didn't move the slide. Right, there it is. So we had a needs assessment done last year and they took a look at the Public Works Department. They looked at our department. They looked at the Fleet Department and the parks and the growth and the, how many more vehicles we're having, the size of our vehicles, the parking things that we need to keep them inside for the winter so they don't get all rusty and fall apart on us and keep them warm so they're ready to go when we need them. It ended up that we all need extra space. The utilities in particular sits on five acres. We're going to, we need more room to lay down area to, and we're all boxed in. We got a marsh on one side, wastewater to the south, you know, street on the other side, so there's nowhere for us to go. Champion Field is a really good option for us. It's fourteen acres if the ball fields move. So all together, conceptually, with the, you heard more about the spoils from our equipment and the drainage area that would be required similar to a manure pit. It would be a little more elaborate than that, but yes, that's what it would similarly be like. It's about a thirty million dollar adventure, so. And that's, will be more discussed during budget hearings on your flavor for moving forward with something like that.
I'm going to suggest from a marketing standpoint, we stop referring to that as a manure pit that we're going to put next to other people's houses. Where a baseball field used to be and that Kevin could potentially see from his house, so.
Well, it's, it's, it's not contaminated soils.
Description than manure pit.
It's going to be a soil drying out. I don't know what else to call it, but.
Thing, but not a manure pit.
That's why we need a communication and a marketing director.
I understand. In the room, we understand how manure stuff works, but for the city guys, yeah, it's not a good idea. Yeah, the other ones are pretty straightforward. Injected cable replacement. We're moving up to the north-central area this year and we're going to start replacing cable that's failing for reliability purposes. That's an ongoing every year project. And then the conversion of the Southwood subdivision, we had put that off because transformers were very difficult to find. We believe in twenty-four, we should have enough transformers to be able to do that. We're saving our transformers for all the new homes being built so we can get power to them. And these people already have power, so we're just holding off on them, so.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Let's move on to wastewater.
Condensed version.
Thank you, Joe.
You and Tony are about the same time.
Well, I got three minutes.
Long as he didn't go to Europe and we don't have a slideshow from that, he should.
I would love to give you another slideshow on that. My four items are build deceptive receding station that we're in design, we're, we're going to be doing design this year. Look at replacing, doing the engineering to replace the, our return activated sledge piping. And basically, that's the three final clarifiers. Right now, that water all comes back to a wet well and from the wet well, it goes in, runs into the transmission line for the pumps. This would be sucking the water directly right off the bottom of the tanks. It would basically decrease our cost of electricity because we're going to be taking in only pumping about forty percent of the water. Right now, we pump a hundred percent of the forward flow. So if we have three million gallons of water going through the plant, we return three million gallons to the plant, so. The process only really needs to do about forty percent for it to run properly. So that would be one of the second big priorities for the twenty-four design. I've got a lot of windows that were put in in nineteen seventy-eight. There's no, nothing left between the windows anymore. So they all are fogging up and look terrible and they don't work very well because they're leaking. And then the, the last one would be to replace the solids building roof. That roof is in need of work and after we get done with both of the digists, recoverers, replacements and stuff, there's been a lot of people walking on them. We already have leaks before they started and now we're going to, we have a few more leaks, so. That's the four major things. I won't waste your time. You can look at the pictures that I put in. That's your own time. Anybody questions?
One question. Is there any insurance money from the hailstorm with the roof?
Uh, no, it wasn't, there's no hail storm damage. It's a, it's a, it's hard roof with the pebbles on top, so the hail didn't cause any problem to it. It was just old.
Good. Any other comments? Great. Well, thank you, everybody and all you folks that came out tonight. Thank you very much. Mark, do you want to explain to everyone what the step forward is for our next council meeting and what your expectations are of the council members and myself?
Sure. So for the next meeting, we're looking for the aldermen to come and speak to staff. Let us know your thoughts or ideas and we can expand on some of the things that were brought up tonight, Concord Road, some of the streets, things like that. We'll have a little bit more time to discuss that because there's going to be few of you to talk, but we'll allot a little bit more time for that. But, so the purpose is, is that we get, you know, as staff and, and as a council on the same page, kind of the direction we're looking for. So when we come forth with a budget, we have everything in place that's been discussed. Once again, I'm just going to remind everybody that just because we nod our heads yes and everything's on a list tonight, we're still going to have to look at the numbers. We got to wait, you know, for our net new construction numbers and what our levy limits are going to be to see what fits. But our plots and plans, you know, Lori and I talked a little bit today that, you know, if we get to where the council had some priorities that, you know, had been discussed and, and if they're not fitting in the budget, then we would then look at to say, hey, you wanted this, it's an extra two hundred thousand. In order to include it in the budget, this is where we're going to have to make some reductions. So we want to be able to do that as staff versus doing it on the council floor. I think that would be a more logical way to go. And instead of having to go through everything line item by line item, we can work with each of the department heads and find out where they have some room and, and handle things that way. So that's our plan. And then the meeting after that, we're going to then kind of transition more into talking about strategic plans and things going forward.
How do we envision the shared revenue package possibly impacting our twenty-four budget planning? I mean, we don't, you know, we don't know what that's going to be yet, but I mean, it, it sounds like if it does get enacted, it's going to be for twenty-four.
Correct.
Yeah.
But how are we going to, how are we thinking about that?
You know, they, they were, you know, some of the things I read, you know, you know, we could be looking at like ten percent, which.
It's going to be more than ten percent for us.
Yeah.
There's some, there, they've been, some of the representatives have been given the number for O'Condon Walk, but it's not a done deal, guys, so I want to make sure that we don't all of a sudden plan on a larger number. But to your point, we're going to have to see when they close and get it done, but then that'll help us. And, you know, what people want to do now and where we are, I'm hoping by this summer, we can make those decisions.
And then part of that, you know, is, is the innovation fund. It's like three hundred million dollar fund for consolidated services. How are we looking at that? Are there other, you know, consolidation opportunities in the city? And, and can it still be retroactively applied to our decisions with the dispatch? You know, I don't know, but.
Retroactive would be interesting.
Certainly reaffirms the decision we made two years ago that the state is actively, you know, asking people to consolidate their services and give you money to do it.
Well, now the challenge will be, will they give us some money that's appropriate enough to at least come close to the cost and with the shared revenue and that's what we'll find out.
And isn't the shared revenue going to be mostly, I think it's fire, police? Use fire, transportation, streets. So we can't use it necessarily for personnel? Right, 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 for sure. Well, maybe personnel and fire, police. Yeah, fire, police.
And I think the challenge is we don't really know a hundred percent until they make the decision, so.
I agree.
But it, it, it has to play a role, coming back to your original question, Chaz, you're, you're spot on. It's got to come into, as soon as we feel comfortable that we have a number, that'll be put in. Lori, do you have any other comments on that?
No, we're going to be watching what's happening. We've got a webinar tomorrow. We'll keep updated on it and bring in.
Like to entertain them?
Well, I have one in common, just briefly. I think this was very helpful. I'm glad we did it. I, I do know what, what seems to me to be a glaring department we're missing, which is the fire department. We haven't heard anything from the fire department, so I don't know if we can get something from them before. And I don't know if they weren't asked to present anything or they didn't have anything. I know they have their own management board essentially, but, you know, if they have significant issues going on, you know, some significant capital thing they're looking at, it would have behooved us to have some of that here today. So I don't know why they weren't, why fire department's not here, but they should have been.
Good point. Mark, could we get these slides consolidated deck or PDF? That'd be great.
That'd be awesome.
That'd be outstanding.
If anybody's having problems with things in their packet, please let Diane know. Everything you have is, is posted on the website, so you can grab them, yeah.
You think you could have Brad reach out to us and?
We'll have him. We'll have him here at the next meeting. He can open them, up the meeting and talk about the fire department first.
Sure.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
Opposed?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll, please. Calderon, please.
Alderman Altman-Cloth. Alderman Ellis. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Maroney.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Welcome, everybody, and also a special welcome to our scout sitting in the audience working on a citizenship badge. Welcome. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of minutes for April 18, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, if anybody in the audience has any comments or suggestions, please fill out a blue card. Are there any comments or suggestions that you'd like to share with the council? With no blue cards, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. Like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Onto our committee reports. Consider Act on Resolution 23-R3127 authorizing the application for Wisconsin DNR recreational boating facility grant for Lacklabel Boat Launch. Mr. Hepner.
This is a big moment in history again for Ocon. So this is a grant for the DNR. This is called Recreation of Boating Facilities Grant. This is for the Lacklabel Boat Launch Project. The city will be applying for it as we are the owners of the property, but it is a partnership with the Town of Conemawak, Village of Lacklabel, and the Lacklabel Management District. The grant request will be somewhere between 800,000 and 1.2 million. It's a 50-50 matching grant. We're still narrowing down the cost, but as our public information meeting we had last week, we're probably looking at about a $2 million max project, so it'll be a million-dollar grant request. It's due June 1, and we would find out likely in mid to late August. This is through the Waterways Commission of the DNR, and they move along a little quicker than the stewardship or the law con funds. So we need to authorize the resolution for the application, and then I'll be filling out the grant with the help of MSA.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Hepner? Would you like to share anything about your meeting with their boat launch design, just for the public, please?
We held a public information meeting at the police, or the Police Department Public Safety Building last week. It was attended by over 40 people. Overall, very good comments. I think people are very happy. I think ultimately, if we do one thing, make one improvement, everybody's going to be happy because it's better than what we have now, but we're trying to make it a great project, and that's what we told them. So it's a lot of activity in a small piece of land with parking and access and safety, but trying to address all of those. There's some buildings involved. I think Mark and I talked probably right about the grant application time at that council meeting. We'll do an update, kind of show you the latest concept plan and kind of bring you up to speed where we're at with it. But I think the community is very supportive. We're going to nail most of the topics, but again, it's still 20 gallons of information and items into a five-gallon bucket of land, so doing the best we can. But I think it'll be much improved, and the grant will help us progress. And then timing, we'd like to finish design. We'll get into deep design then, the summer and fall, and then looking at construction at the earliest, and hopeful to do it in fall of 2024. Not closing the boat launch, though, at any point, and apparently a lot of the work could be done in the winter, so that would be helpful.
And hopefully less expensive. Questions or comments from council? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Onto Consider Act on Ordinance 23-01046 to create 9.32 of the City of Conemawak Municipal Code regarding third-party gift card procurement. This is the first reading. Chief Hister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proposing this ordinance. The ordinance aims to deter fraudulent purchases of third-party gift cards. Requires a business to verify information at a point of sale by comparing the identification of the person purchasing it along with the gift card and the credit card name, so that everything matches up. Prohibits self-checkout purchases of prepaid gift cards without employee assistance. It targets only Visa, MasterCard, American Express gift cards that are purchased with a credit card. I looked at our community, and we're having an issue with the credit cards being stolen and then being used throughout our community and the surrounding communities to purchase these gift cards. And I found this great ordinance from another police department in Minnesota. I reviewed it, went over it with our city attorney as well, and really want to bring this forward to help along with deterring the criminals to come here to our community.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Are you done?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to jump in too soon here. Um, I know we just kind of, we literally just discussed this in committee, but what would be the, what would happen to a business if they don't comply with this?
The first time would be a warning. We'd educate them and try and work with them and their staff. And, you know, we would periodically be willing to come out to, you know, educate all of their employees, you know, that are working there. Potentially, if they would continue to violate the ordinance, it would be a $1,500 fine and mandatory court appearance, at which time our city attorney and judge would work with that business to get them in compliance.
Okay, and who would be?
Our goal is not to penalize the businesses, but to just get to work with them, so.
Because I agree with some of what Chaz said in committee about, you know, let's not just, you know, start penalizing them, and, you know, one of my kids was a checkout cashier at Pick 'n Save, and, you know, sometimes the younger kids might not comply with it just because they're nervous or, you know, whatever. But then, on the other hand, it makes me think of one of the times that our debit card got hacked, and I remember talking to the bank, and I said, this is, you know, because it was like the third time it had happened to us in a really short amount of time, and I said to the bank, why is this, you know, where are the checks and balances on this? And she had said, my card was used at a Walmart. And I said, why didn't they ask for an ID? You know, why didn't they do this? Why didn't they do that? And the bank's response was, at the end of the day, Walmart doesn't care.
Right.
Because they're not the ones that have to pay for it.
Correct.
It falls on the bank. So, again, like, I see where Chaz was coming from in committee, but then the other part of me is like, let's make it a giant fine, and, you know, you get one warning, and that's it, because this has to stop.
Correct. And that's our goal, is to try and obviously establish this here and then get some of our surrounding communities to join with us on this. And like you said, it's not about trying to penalize a store, or if they're attempting to do what we're asking by the ordinance, the right route is education, to get them to comply with it, so.
I appreciate you doing the work on this.
Alderman Mulder.
Well, my question was actually about that, but I came up with another one since it's my turn.
Good thing I went first.
How, how, what's the scope of this? Like, how often are you responding to these? I'm in support of it. I think it's a good plan. I'm just wondering how wide this is for you.
Happening every day, multiple times a day in our community.
Okay, so you're responding to every one of them?
Yep. So, once we find out, it's usually after the fact.
Right.
And then there's not a whole lot. It's very difficult for us to follow up on.
Alderman Shellpepper, then Rosick, then Spiegelberg.
Yeah, the questions I, I mean, you know, the questions I had in committee aren't necessarily that I'm opposed to the ordinance. I'm just have questions about whether we had informed businesses of our intent to pass this ordinance. So my biggest thing right now is I just want to make sure businesses have the opportunity to provide input on this ordinance and that they're aware that we're looking to pass this ordinance before we do it. So that was my concern, and just like, you know, gaming out some of these other issues in terms of just enforceability, how often it's happening. You've answered some of those questions. How do you think you will be informed of noncompliance with this ordinance most often? Like, how do you think you're going to be finding out that this ordinance is being violated, and then how will we?
Basically, that's going to come back to when we track down where the card was used.
Yeah.
What the purchase was. We always get the video from the store. We'll be able to tell if they checked ID through that video, you know, what transpired, you know, that way as well.
Yeah, so we're not going to, this isn't going to be like a proactive, we're kind of looking and making sure people are in compliance. We're going to find out, because someone's going to report that their credit card was illegally used in town to purchase a gift card. We're going to pull the, you know, the video, and we're going to say to the business, hey, you were aware that this ordinance was in place. You violated this ordinance. We warned you previously. You now have a $1,500 fine and, and, you know.
Potentially, yes.
Court appearance, so. And that's why it just goes back to me, is like, it's our responsibility and obligation then to educate, to be, you know, to, that this, this isn't going to be.
And we had talked about the educational process, and I, you know, we weren't sure, do we really go out ahead of time, or is it, bring it forward here to get, you know, the initial opinion of that education?
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure we're thinking about every angle, because maybe the business has an angle we're not thinking about right now, and so that's why I just, you know, get in their opinion, too, before we pass it, you know, and I'm willing to do a first reading tonight, knowing that a second reading is required, so.
It seems like such a good thing. It's surprising to me that it's not done anyplace else in Wisconsin, so great job, chief, and it'll be interesting to see how it goes. Alderman Rosick.
Yeah, I think it's important to have these discussions on these. I mean, we're adding essentially police powers and fines, so this is really important for us to have a debate, whether we all agree or not, because we are adding ordinances and laws. I think it's probably become a bigger issue, because the old robberies of breaking in and stealing like a laptop or a TV, like, nobody wants to do that, you know, where you sell this stuff, they're not worth anything. But if you can steal a credit card out of a purse in a trunk, you can go get $1,000 worth of gift cards and do whatever you want with that money. You can go to Vegas, you can buy plane tickets, whatever. So I think that portion of the petty crime is kind of advanced into this, and that's why we're, I think that's cool that we're taking a first step. I'm definitely in support. I like doing the first reading and giving the businesses a couple of weeks to, hey, can we add a warning in here first into the ordinance? Or maybe we add this something in that they've got an idea. Some of these companies like Pick 'n Save and Walgreens are national companies. They've got to be in other states where these are issues, and they have ordinances, so they should be able to maybe give us some feedback and say, hey, they do this in California, and here's how it works, and add this to the ordinance. Awesome. That was my comments.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Two quick questions, taking off of what Alderman Shellpepper said. I think it would be important also for us to educate the community, maybe via the newspapers or whatever, that this is now going to be in effect, and I think that will partially deter people within our community also as to trying to do this. My second question, at this time, it says targets only Visa, MasterCard, and American Express, and I read through the ordinance. It seems to leave the door open if we want to add more, and will you be staying on top of that with maybe other communities? I mean, I'm thinking, you buy a big Amazon card, you buy Amazon cards at most these places, or, and you can do, you know, you can buy a lot of merchandise on Amazon with these cards, even like Walmart, Target. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a great point. So between now and the next reading, I will definitely research that, and I will talk with our city attorney on that as well to see if that's covered in here or not, correct?
Alderman Mulder.
Would it be, could we reach out to the Chamber of Commerce in Doba and let them specifically know about this, so they can share it out to their businesses between readings?
Might be nice to have them get that out, and then if they have public comment, they could come on the 16th.
Right, absolutely. And then second, why limit? Was that just what you got from the Minnesota ordinance, or?
Well, I mean, actually, in here, you know, it pulls those ones out, but I think actually, when it talks about the gift cards, we were debating, you know, and we were going to put in there, add similar type cards, you know, in there as well, and maybe that's a part of this that we need to add, especially after going to some of these businesses and talking to them, and that's a great point with Amazon as well, so.
It seems like it'd be better to be all of them, because otherwise, the high school kid needs, oh, it's an Amazon, I don't need to check it.
Right. We were trying to eliminate somebody who wants to buy a gift card to a restaurant.
Dunkin' Donuts.
You know, where they can still go through a self-checkout, you know, or do something like that and not forcing everybody. But that certainly will work with the businesses, and, you know, they might be, nope, let's just do all, right.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
I guess Mulder just paid me back, because that's what I was going to say. So, but I was going to say it a little bit simpler, like.
Cheesecake Factory part?
No, although that does sound good. Yeah, just for simplicity's sake, just all gift cards, you have to have an ID. You know, again, because the 15-year-old checkout, I mean, my daughter, I could just imagine her right now just going, wait, do I ask for an ID? Do I not ask for an ID? Like, just make it simple.
So my question would be, is you ever send your 15-year-old daughter into a store with your card to buy something? And if she doesn't have an ID, she can't buy that gift card for you, that, you know, you're trying to put in that card, you know, because it's a last-minute gift that you forgot about?
I would never forget about anything. Wait, when's your birthday again? No.
I was thinking about the guy next to you.
I tried, I tried to get a gift card, but they were all, they were all sold out.
I know. I agree, and that's something that we will look at between now and then.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments? Does somebody have a comment I missed? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Alderman Maroney.
I was just going to say, I agree with Karen as far as educating the public about this. I don't think people are aware that this is happening multiple times a day in our city. I think there's been recently, we've heard about the break-ins at the fitness centers, and I think people are generally trying to connect those to, you know, what's happening with the gift cards versus those break-ins. So I think that awareness is going to be important for this.
And I think this is a first step where it brings it out where we can, this is a bridge that we can go out there on and start talking about with our community. So, thank you.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Onto Consider Act on the Developers Agreement for Prairie Creek Ridge Subdivision, Edition 7. Jason.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just wanted to bring the next phase of the Prairie Creek subdivision to you. We looked at the preliminary last meeting, and this is the developers agreement. It's very similar to the Phase 6. Phase 7 is actually positioned right in between 5 and 6. It's a smaller subdivision and very similar, if not identical, conditions in this side of this agreement, plus an extension of a pathway coming out of the west side of the development, as we had talked about, a trail connection possibly in the future. So that's part of this development, as the contractor and developer will be installing basically the piece that's still inside the city.
Questions or comments for Mr. Herzog? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
No staff reports this evening. Do you have any reports or comments from the Aldermen? Alderman Ellis or Alderman Altman-Cloth?
I just wanted to wish Alderman Ellis a happy birthday.
All right.
It was very weird sitting next to nobody last week, so I'm really, or two weeks ago, so I'm happy.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Alderman Ellis.
I had a few individuals complain to me about a garbage pickup. Who would I, I need to go ahead and have a conversation with you about that? All right, I'll call you tomorrow about it.
Okay.
Any other comments from Aldermen? No really additional comments. I'm just happy to announce that I'm a grandfather for the second time and have a granddaughter as of late last night, so pretty cool, pretty much of a miracle, and puts life in perspective for sure, so.
Hold on to your birthday?
No, she couldn't hold on to my birthday, and then she didn't want Kevin's birthday. So just wish you guys a wonderful week. We'll see you on the 16th, and please come kind of prepared with what some of your ideas are to give feedback to our department heads moving forward on the budget. And then after we kind of go through this budget cycle, we'll come back and say, okay, how did it work? Did you like this better? Are there things that we can improve? Are there things that we can refine? So kind of keep thinking of those, because we want to continually improve in what we do. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? Going here, is it all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
All opposed?
Have a good evening.